And you guys all get that message there, just got it, got it. Kelly, Anne and Bob Campbell will not be with us tonight. I think so. We're waiting on Commissioner Swainy. And waiting on. Who else was it, Ray?
Phil.
No, Phil's here.
Come here. Oh, there you are. Should've washed better.
Ray, who was it that we're still waiting on?
Kyle Camp and Commissioner.
Oh, yeah, Kyle Camp. Kyle Camp's gonna not be on video. He's gonna be on phone though today. Oh, and then Jerry, Jerry's back. I see he popped away. We up and live, right?
We are up and live on YouTube.
We do have one, two, three, four. We do have five. So we do have a forum. And it is seven o'clock. If you'd like to get started, Kelly, it's up to you.
Yes, let's get started and Kyle gets here, he can jump in. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held electronically in compliance with the OMA. As Isabella County is currently operating under a local state of emergency as adopted by Resolution Number twenty dash twelve dash oh three by the Isabella County Board of Commissioners. Oh, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's too short.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice. Well, that's a little bit of a trick with everybody's voice coming in your headphone. All right, just to remind everybody, this is being recorded and livestreamed and it will be stored on YouTube. So I'm assuming go to the county's website. You can review any of these meetings in the, in the future. For the most part, we're going to want to do a roll call vote for everything. And there are public people, people have the ability to listen publicly. I don't know if there's anybody out there listening at all, Ray, but I need to notice there's instructions on how to, how to call in and listen. All right, so let's do a roll call. When Kim calls out your name, if you would say here and then where you're at as far as if, if you're out of state, name the state, otherwise just city location within the county.
And Ray's gonna handle that tonight. Kim is not with us.
Oh, all right. Sorry about that.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Commissioner O'Neill, present, Mount Pleasant, Michigan.
Commissioner Bean.
President, Vernon Township.
Commissioner Vogel.
President, Denver Township.
Commissioner Nyer.
President, Isabelle, or Lincoln Township.
And Commissioner Brookins.
President, Rowland Township.
And everybody, right?
Yep, it's everybody that's on the meeting with us now.
All right. So just, just for clarification, if anybody shows up, do we stop the meeting and, and ask them where they're, where they're coming from?
Yeah, I think if somebody, if somebody does show up, we'll just, you know, normally we would just mark them present, but at least we'll have them check in with their location.
Got it. Okay. All right, approval of agenda. So everybody's looked at the agenda. Any additions or changes, staff?
Staff has none at this time.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second, O'Neill.
Right. Okay, so agendas, we don't need to have a roll call for agendas, correct?
Correct agenda is minutes, we can just take a vote.
All right, it's been a while since I've done one of these, all right? So cut me some slack. All right, so all in favor, say aye. 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 Okay, agenda is approved. Minutes from the previous meeting. Take a minute, look them over and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the May thirteenth meeting.
Nyer moved to approve the agenda.
Vogel second.
The minutes, correct?
Minutes, sorry.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Liaison reports, Phil Vogel.
The ZBA did not meet, so there's nothing to report.
Okay. Parks and Rec, Tim?
Yes, the Parks and Rec has met once since our previous meeting. We met on August fourth. At Deerfield Park, we received a financial report, Camp Brown summary. And the director's report by all measurable criteria, it appears that the park is set for another record year for attendance and this kind of mirrors a state and national trend during the pandemic, which has seen a marked increase in usage of parks.
All right, thank you. I guess since Mr. Swainy hasn't made it yet, we'll skip the Board of Commissioners. We'll catch him twice next time. Township concerns, we, since we've been doing these meetings on Zoom, we've been pushing that up to the public comment period. And that brings us to the public comment period. So we're gonna open that right now. Is there anybody that's listening?
Mr. Chairman, there's nobody else on the meeting with us.
Okay.
Kelly, just real quick, Jackie Turnus did contact us like she does every month. She will be watching tonight from Denver Township on the YouTube channel.
All right, good. Thanks, Jackie. All right, since there's no more public comment, we'll close the meet, the public comment section of the meeting and we're gonna move on to some public hearings. Special use permit twenty-one dash oh one rural production and processing by Mr. Levi Miller.
Yeah, so, yep, I'm gonna go ahead and present this tonight. Mr. Miller or Mr. Brenneman, both the applicant and the owner are not on the call tonight. We did advise them that if there were questions, that there is an opportunity that the board may have to table this if there are things that staff cannot answer. But I'll go ahead and summarize sort of our staff report and let you know what he's got going and what he's looking for. The applicant again is Levi Miller, property owner is Noah Brenneman. We're in section fourteen of Brewfield Township. The current property location address is seventy-eight ninety-two West Remus Road. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for a rural production and processing facility to construct wooden lamps and other wood crafts, properties approximately eight acres in size located at the northeast corner of West Remus Road and South Britton Road. The district, zoning district is currently general agriculture ag two and the use is permitted by special land use in that district. A little background here, the applicant has been in the office a few times and staff has been out on site, working with the applicant. The applicant has, currently has a zoning permit to construct a home and a garage or a home and a shop attached to the garage or attached to the home. The rural production and processing activity will take place in the attached garage. By ordinance, rural production and processing facility require a residence on the property. So this is kind of a new build. Most of these that we receive, that we see for rural production and processing facilities are old existing established homesteads or established residences that they're looking to do this on. This is something that is a little different for us. And it is new and it, and when they build the home and the, and the other structure, they would be in compliance with the ordinance. Some of the details here include, they applied for the application on August thirteenth. They included comments on the general requirements for special land uses, included their site plan. In their comments, they indicated there would be no additional employees and they had a details of their site disposal or waste disposal plan for the site. Um, they do, we, you know, when staff did a review on this, we had a couple areas of concern. One of them was the conduct in accessory building. And again, that's what I was kind of talking about early on there. Where they're building this house, they have a zoning permit to build both. We have a stipulation that we've imposed that I'll, that you have at the end of your staff report and I'll go through in a few minutes here. That requires them to have occupancy on the home prior to the establishment of the, of the rural production and processing facility. Cause that then ensures us that there is a home on site for this activity to go on and that they don't get the permit from us. Build the garage this year, start their activity in their business and then maybe build the house down the road, kind of a thing, have to have a house. So we're gonna stipulate that they provide us with occupancy to the home prior to them operating the facility. The second area of concern was the current access to this on the site plan is located off of M twenty. We did have some concerns. We did contact M dot, raised their pointing to the site plan. That's M twenty at the bottom of the page, Britton Road, South Britton Road on the left, my left hand side of the page. And north would be straight up on that page. M dot is suggesting and asking us to have the applicant abandon that access and provide access off of South Britton Road. Again, remember this is Amish application. They will have buggy and carriage. They will have you know, slower traffic that could cause some safety hazards along M twenty. So, you know, we would do, I think, what M dot would ask us to do and have that abandoned. We've talked to the applicant about all of these that I'm gonna speak to and they've agreed to all of them. So they don't have any problem moving, moving the driveway either to South Britton Road. The third item that we had some concerns with is because of its proximity to M twenty and the amount of traffic that passes by. These rural production and processing facilities were established as no sale storefront. We have indicated that to the applicant on several occasions and we would also stipulate that here that there is contractual sales only. They will create the product, do their woodworking. They will have a truck come in, pick it up and it'll be shipped to another store, another location for sale. It's relatively small scale, being that it's only a two thousand square foot facility. The applicant has also agreed to that. Screening was the next item that we had some concerns about. The topography of this land. This kind of sits down in a bowl a little bit, coming from M twenty, heading sort of to the north northwest, I'm sorry, north northeast. The topography kind of dips down and runs in that direction. So the ordinance does call for screening in locations where we have adjacent residences. So as you can see on there, there's a couple of locations, Ray will point them out with his pointer. Up in the northwest corner, he's indicated that he would put some screening in that area because there is a home adjacent to Britton Road right up in here. And in the southwest corner across M twenty, there is another home and we're proposing some screening there at the right of way to M twenty. And staff would indicate that because the house isn't there quite yet and the, and the building isn't there yet, that the applicant, and we've done this on a few others, that the applicant worked with staff to comply with the ordinance requirements per screening prior to establishment of this. So we've stipulated that as well. The waste disposal plan, the applicant has indicated that they would burn any waste wood as a heat source and they would use their sawdust for animal bedding. The ordinance does require that the planning commission approve that. So we've included that as a stipulation as well. One additional item that we did not include that we just sort of came across today was the requirement, and we would like for this to be stipulated. The requirement for a new address, the applicant will be moving that driveway around to Britton Road. So they will need a new address off of Britton Road. So we would include that as a stipulation as well and I'll, I'll read that stipulation here in a second. In your staff report, you do have the section twelve oh three general requirements for special land use. You do have section twelve oh five KK rural production and processing facilities. And in summary, staff has, you know, done all the notifications as per state law requirements and ordinance requirements. And the application appears to be complete in its way. We would suggest and recommend the following conditions and stipulations be made. And there are four of them, or there, there's four of them in your staff report and I'm gonna add one additional one with regard to the address. So I'm gonna really quickly read through these for the record. Number one would be the applicant should provide a copy of the certificate of occupancy for the home prior to operating the rural production and processing facility. Number two, the existing driveway on M twenty, as indicated on the site plan, shall be abandoned and access to the site shall be, shall only be made from South Britton Road. Additionally, a permit for the new driveway shall be provided to staff. Screening shall be installed and maintained within the direct line of site to neighboring residences as indicated on the approved site plan. And the applicant shall work with staff to finalize the screening in compliance with the ordinance. Screening shall consist of staggered double row of evergreens, evergreen trees planted no greater than ten feet on center. Trees shall be a minimum of three foot height at planting. The applicant's waste disposal plan, as described in the application, is approved by the planning commission. And number five, the applicant shall apply for and obtain a new address for the South Britton Road access from the Isabella County Community Development Department. So those five stipulations or conditions would be something that we would be asking for you to impose if you were looking to approve this tonight. Staff has no other comments and there has been no correspondence for or against the request to this time. So if you have any questions for staff, be more than happy to answer them at this time.
All right, so we're at the public hearing section, but there is no public, correct, Ray?
There's no public currently on the call with us.
Okay, so we're gonna spend with that and does anybody have any questions about this application?
No.
None whatsoever.
Well, we, so we have an application looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll give you a motion. Move to approve special use permit twenty-one dash oh one as submitted by Levi Miller to establish a rural production and processing facility in the general agricultural AG two district and shall further be conditioned upon the five conditions that were set out by Mr. Newport.
All right, I would second.
Okay, have a motion in a, in a second, right? Could we do a roll call vote for this, please?
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Nyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Brookins.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Okay, moving on. So we're on to the non-public hearing section. There's a PA one six, two PA one sixteen agreements. Do you wanna go over those, please, Tim?
Yeah, I'll run through them quickly for you. The first one is in Co Township. It's from an agreement from Lawrence Feltman. It's in section twenty-three, it's two adjacent parcels making a total of seventy-eight acres. Co Township does plan for agricultural and currently zones it agricultural. The application period is for ninety years. The application does appear to be complete. This application is one that we received in May and it was prior to our post cancellation of our June meeting. As you recall, these are consensus items only. We just do a review and we send a letter back to the township and or the county clerks. And in this case, we spoke with the township supervisor and indicated that the application was received. We did review it and we did comment verbally to the township, but the, but the planning commission hadn't seen it yet. By statute, I believe they have forty-five days to respond. We wouldn't have been able to respond in a timely fashion and this has happened to us before. This is sort of just a courtesy review. This has already been moved through the process, but we do want to let them know that planning commission at their next available meeting did review it. So if you have any questions, I can answer them now. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and send a letter back to Co Township advising them that you reviewed it tonight on September ninth.
Any questions regarding this or comments? All right, we have a consensus.
All right.
Next one.
So the next firm land agreement is for Side Street Pork Farm two LLC. It's in Coldwater Township, section thirty-six. It's an eighty acre parcel. It's currently zoned ag three rural residential in the master plan. And the application is for ten years. It is a complete application. And if you have no concerns with this, this is a new application. If you have any comments, we will feed those back to the county clerk. If you have no comments or feedback at this time, we'll just let them know that you reviewed it here on your September ninth meeting.
Any comments or questions? All right, sounds like a consensus. All right, item number, letter C. Selection of sound consultants.
Yeah, so as you may require, I'm gonna, I'm gonna quickly introduce, we have tonight with us from Spicer Group, Cynthia Todd and Jennifer Stewart. Cynthia and Jennifer are both here to answer any questions possibly if they come up. Alan Bean could not be here with us tonight. So I'm gonna go ahead and present the information to you. I think it's pretty cut and dry. But we can talk a little bit about the proposals. We can talk a little bit about Alan's staff report that you would have received that he sent to me and then my staff report to you. Ultimately, what we're looking for tonight, and I did not include this in my staff report and I don't know why, is a recommended, is a motion from you guys. And I have a recommended motion. I'm gonna go ahead at this time and read to you what the, or I'm gonna go ahead through the staff reports and talk to you about this process and then I'll read to you the recommended motion that we would be looking for. So as you recall, in section twelve oh five QQ of the ordinance, it looks like we have Commissioner Swainy coming in.
That's correct, Tim. He's just joining.
Steve.
How's it going?
If you would. If you would just announce your name and that you're here and where you're, and where you're at, please.
I'm sorry, I have this in my calendars to seven thirty. I, I apologize. Really, my name is Steve Swainy. I am attending remotely from my home in Mount Pleasant, Michigan. And again, my apologies.
Thanks.
Steve, we're just starting on to see under, I believe it's other business of the yeah, other business, see the selection of the sound consultant.
Oh, okay.
Starting now.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Move fast.
Yep, it was, it was a quick one tonight, Steve. So, so here, here's what we have. Section QQ, I'm sorry, section twelve oh five QQ of the zoning ordinance requires a post-construction sound study for wind turbines. So we approved that wind turbine project back in January thirty-first of twenty nineteen. And we're at the completion phase of that project. So we're at the time when we need to select this third-party consultant to do the sound study. The purpose behind the sound study is when we received the application, we received modeled projections based on output and performance of those turbines. So now that the operation activity or the, the turbines are active and operating and commercially producing power, we want to actually test that to ensure that it complies with twelve oh five QQ sixteen, which is the sound requirement for wind turbines. So what we've done was we, in, in meeting with Spicer Group and Alan Bean, we talked about how we would handle this and who, who we would seek to provide that study. There's not a lot of vendors, not a lot of sound specialists out there that work with turbines. And so we selected, I think, five, as he outlined in his, in Alan's memo. He outlined five consultants that are firms that we, we would talk to and see if there was interest in them providing a sound study for us for the Isabella Wind Project. The companies were Acoustics by Design out of Grand Rapids, Robert Anderson Group out of Lansing, Hankard Environmental out of Wisconsin, Ken Kaliski of RSG out of Vermont, and Robert O'Neill of Epsilon out of Massachusetts. Alan had then spoke to the five of those after we had selected those would be the groups that we would go over and sort of placed out a request for information. Are you interested? What are you looking at? Can you, can you answer some questions for me? He did that. He laid out five proposals for each of them or five areas within the proposal for each of them to answer, such as a scope of work, proposed schedule, who their team was, what their costs were, and then any additional information that would, would assist us in making a decision on the selection. August sixth was the deadline to have that information provided back to him. He received that from three companies. I believe he reached out to the other two to see if they would be submitting and, and they were not going to submit. So of the three, he applied some criteria which he has on page two of his staff report to me. The one that's dated August twenty-fourth of twenty-one. Such as overall experience, overall clarity of proposal thoroughness of the five required items. Can they do it in a, in a timely fashion in those kinds of things? So there was A through F of requirements. Through Alan's review, independent from, from staffs, Ray and I sat down and we reviewed these. I think all three of us came to the same conclusion and then we got together and we all had the same conclusion. The, of the three that we received, the prices ranged from just under fifty-eight thousand, which is the Ken Kaliski of RSG cost. I think it was fifty-seven nine, not to exceed. The Acoustics by Design proposal came in at, I just under sixty, it was fifty-nine something. I had to act, we had to actually calculate it because they didn't calculate it for us based on the amount of sites that they were going to see. We asked in the proposal, there was a ten to one ratio rounded up. So there would be, we have a hundred and thirty-six turbines. There would be fourteen sites tested. They only gave us a price for eight and then included each additional one would be this much. By the time you added that up, it came into around sixty thousand, which was a similar cost to the RSG, but a little, little, little higher. The third one out of Hankard out of Wisconsin, Hankard Environmental, they came in at a hundred thousand flat. The, the, after, you know, after reviewing the three proposals and placing the criteria to it, not just looking at price because cost isn't always the best, you know, isn't, isn't the best option all the time. Some people may undercut it. It's the most responsible bid that we were looking for. And we felt that the Ken Kaliski of RSG located at Vermont would be the company that we'd be recommending to you to select. They were the lowest bidder. They were the most thorough. They were the most complete. They, they appeared to have the most experience. When I personally read through the three proposals, the Acoustics by Design proposal, it was four pages long. It gave us very little information. First page is a cover letter. Last page is a signature page. It was very minimal. I don't even think they answered all of the five criteria that we, we requested of them. And that's too bad because they're, they're a Michigan, they're a local company out of Michigan here in the Grand Rapids area. So we kind of said, you know, I'm not sure if that, that fits this. And then the Hankard Environmental, not only were they coming in at a hundred thousand dollars, which is nearly forty thousand dollars higher than the other two proposals. They also indicated that they have, they have and continue to work with Apex Clean Energy. And so from a a perception of, of a possible conflict of interest there, we felt like it was best not to use Hankard. Either their costs are way high as well as they're, they're working with the developer currently. They did not work with the developer on the Apex or on the Isabella Wind project with Apex, but we still felt like they're currently working for them and their bid was too high. And so we wouldn't, wouldn't be recommending them. So, you know, kind of by default as well, I think RSG was a, was a, a great proposal put together for us at a fair, looks like a fair and equitable price. And we would be recommending both a staff as well as Spicer Group would be recommending for you to select the Ken Kaliski of RSG out of Vermont. So I know I kind of threw a bunch there at you. If you have any questions or comments or concerns, I can kind of answer those now and, and if there's something I can't answer, possibly Cynthia or Jennifer could, could answer those. Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion that I'll share with you in a moment after we get through this.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have one question. How will they choose the fourteen?
Yeah, so, so part of the process, there was a memo that was done back in twenty eighteen that we kind of laid out a strategy for them. Basically, we're gonna have the company Basically, we're going to have the company take a look at the areas where the, that. According to the model and the current placement that, that, as built. That could cause the, the greatest potential around the, the greatest potential for noise around the entire farm. So it's going to be a sort of using the model of what was applied for. As well as real world and selecting those locations based on multiple turbines. You know, multiple residences within short proximity of, and we're going to test those ones.
Okay, can I just ask a question in Newport? So what you're saying is so when they did the modeling, if I remember this right, that they projected out noise. And they projected out noise at different levels to different residences, right? And what they're going to do is select the ones that they, that through their projections were the most likely. To, I don't know, say, create too much noise, but to be on the other, or the, the, the level of the spectrum. Of the greatest risk of causing too much.
Correct. Correct. So if you remember, I think they were green in color. There were green circles. On your site plans back in twenty nineteen and those green circles were representative of the maximum noise output. That we have within our ordinance. And what they did was they moved their turbine locations to places. That then did not have those green circles, their maximum outputs. Encroaching on any non-participating property lines. Because our ordinance requires that sound to be at that level at a non-participating property. And so the model came out that way. And anywhere where, you know, if we're. A quarter mile from a non-participating property line, obviously, no, we're not going to do tests in that area. You know, we're going to do tests where the lines were pretty close, where we have lots of residences, or we maybe have multiple turbines, where we have lots of. Residences in a prevailing wind direction even. So we're going to use some of the, you know, metadata that we have coming out of the Met Towers. And, and other things to make these decisions, but essentially, Tim, what you said was, was correct.
Can I ask, how frequent do they find the wind turbines? Are violating the sound ordinance? Is it? Ten percent of the time or you, it's, you don't know?
I do, I really don't. I mean, this is a first go for staff, you know, first wind project we've had. I don't know that there was even a post-construction sound study done on the co township. You know, some ordinances don't even require it. Our ordinance does and some don't. So I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I, I would guess that it doesn't happen very often. This is not a, you know, inexpensive venture where they can move something or that they want to reduce power. So they're getting less output out of something. Than what they anticipated. So I, I'm assuming their engineers have done a pretty good job and, and, and they'll be, they'll be within compliance.
Okay.
So I have a, a question, Tim. When you, when you're doing the study, so they come over from Vermont. At a set period of time and we do the wind study, alright, and a deal. But that's not necessarily the time when the turbines may be the loudest either. So, so we've done a wood study, the turbines are fine, but we've done it when it's not necessary to the loudest. So that seems like not a real good thing.
Well, they're going to do this wind study at, and they're going to do this study at an optimal time when we actually have them operating at full capacity. We're going to have the ability to shut them down. We can't turn them on because we can't just make them spin. But the winds could make them spin. So they're going to choose the optimal time with regard to temperature, with regard to wind direction, with regard to. You know, other ambient things, you know, no rainstorms, those kind of things going on. But winds that are going to make these turbines. Move at their highest capacity for their highest output. And then DTE is going to be involved in this process as DT is now the owner of the project and DT is going to be involved in the process so that, so that the. The technician that's going to be trained and sitting on site. Doing the sound study can, can call out and have them turn turbine on and off. So that they can work through their experiences of, of sound. To pull out any of those ambient noises, those other noises, because it isn't the noise as a whole at that property line. It's the turbine noise that we're trying to get to. The turbine noise.
Turbine noise above the ambient noise.
Ambient's got to be pulled out and there's, so I, I believe, you know, what, what you're saying would be true, but I do believe that they're operating in a, in a time when. When the turbines are going to be moving at optimal output.
So this is going to go on over maybe, this isn't going to be a. Third week of February, we're going to do it. This may, there's a six-month period of time that whenever the.
We're gonna, on a Friday, they're going to schedule, on a Friday, they're going to schedule, hey, next week looks good. Let's go. You know, kind of a thing. They're going to get flights and they're going to come, you know, and so there's a scheduling issue, which is what takes so long. There's a time, there's a, I think they said fourteen degrees Celsius, I believe, or no, what was her? I don't know, there, there was an optimal temperature that they can't drop below because they have some, some issue with sound after they drop below a certain temp. So they got to keep their temps there. So we don't know if they're even going to go. They may get out yet this fall. But it's more likely they're not going to get out until spring when they're going to have, you know, an open window of us coming out of our winter. You know, into our spring and hopefully find that window where they can, where they can sit there at fourteen different sites for, for three plus hours.
Right. Okay.
I have a question, Tim. Have there any, have there been any complaints from non-participating properties? About sound or requests for sound checks?
We've had a couple, I think, through the process. Ray, is it two, maybe two or three?
Maybe one or two. I think most of the complaints that we got were in relation to shadow flicker and those.
Okay.
Not heard anything since.
Okay, so yeah, you know, overall with regard to the project, I mean, it's been less than a handful of complaints. We, we get more complaints about rural production and processing facilities, which we just approved earlier in the meeting today, than we've had with this wind turbine project to this point. Doesn't mean that there's more not yet to come, but, but we, we've had remarkably. I'm looking for some real wood to knock on, very few complaints coming into our office relative to the project.
Thank you.
Alright, well, if there's.
I have one last question.
Yes, sir.
Are, as far as we're aware, all the generators, size of blades, length of blades. Height of it, they're generally going to be the same? What they're testing?
Well, they're testing sound and so the units, the, I think we have a handful of two twos, two point two megawatt. And we have, and we have, most of them are two point eights. Our two twos are our lower turbines that are around the airport because we. The FAA wouldn't let them go over that five hundred feet. As we got away from the Mount Pleasant City Airport, they allowed them to go up to that almost six hundred foot. And the rest of them are at the two point eight. But each one of those has a, has a, a demand output from GE. Who's the, the designer of, of the, of the nacelle and the turbine itself. That that output is what they're going to be listening for and that they're going to be testing based on.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. You still got to go over the motion, correct?
Yeah, so I put together a recommended motion for you and it would read like this. Move to select the proposal of RSG. To perform the required third-party post-construction sound study for the Isabella Wind Project. And have attorney, Mr. Bill Fahey draft a contract or agreement to present to the county board of commissioners for final signature and approval. So if you're going to move forward with the recommendation of RSG, that would be the recommended motion that we would be seeking. Which would then, with your selection of the company, we would send it off to the attorney, Bill Fahey, who's worked. Through this process since the beginning with us, we'd ask him to work with RSG and Ken Kaliski to establish that and get Kaliski's signature. And then that would come back to, to me by, I don't remember the date I gave, but I gave a date so that I can. Move this through to the county board of commissioners through their committee in late September, for their October fourth or fifth. Meeting. So hopefully, if we work through the process and you give your selection or make that selection today and agree with this recommendation. We would be able to have the attorney prepare the documentation and have the board signature by that first week in October and then the process would be on. So I can read the motion one more time for you if you'd like. Everybody good with it or you want me to read it again?
I'm all good with it.
Yeah. My move to accept the motion as read. Nyer.
That's a cop out, Jerry.
I couldn't remember all that.
You first then, Kelly.
If I wasn't the chair, I'd gladly jump right up and do it.
We'll second that motion.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ray, could we do a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Swainy. Yes. Commissioner Volble.
Yes.
Commissioner Brookins.
Yes.
Commissioner Nyer.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright. Okay, moves us on to staff comments.
Got one more public comment there first, Tim.
By golly, there is. Alright, so any. Any public, Ray, that wants to comment that you can see?
No public in the call with us.
Okay, we'll close the public comment period. Staff comments.
Staff doesn't have any additional comments other than I will be moving the selection of the sound study consultant. Forward to the human resources committee, the county board of commissioners and onto the board in October and hopefully we get that signed right away and. Get that process started and moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Planning commissioner comments, Mr. Brookins.
None.
None. Tim, O'Neil?
I'm looking forward to football tonight. Does that count?
That works. Phil?
Uh, none whatsoever.
Okay, Jerry Nyer.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Alright, Steve, Swainy?
I will quickly fill you in that the one thing I was going to. Let everybody know about a board of commissioners meeting last Tuesday. The, there will be a public hearing September twenty first for the fiscal year budget twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty one, twenty two, twenty two. That's it.
Just, I guess, any other big happenings at the board level?
Not right now. Most everything was our standard approvals and then a lot, a lot of. Approvals for nine one one emergency equipment and software.
Okay, jail still carrying forward, I assume?
Moving forward.
So moving forward, okay. I don't have any comments either, so. Hearing no other comments or no other business here, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you Cindy for being on the call tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. Good, good to see everybody and hopefully things kind of move along and we'll have a few more of these meetings. I'm not used to having. Three in a row off, so hopefully we'll see you in October.
Alright, see you next time.